The regular meeting will come back to order. And at this time, I'll ask for everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I'll ask Mayor Pro Tem Forrest Fleming to lead us, please.
Join with me if you will. I pledge allegiance to the flag, holy name, sacred America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, in the best will, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and please be seated.
Next on our agenda is an invocation given by Reverend Jerry Gamble from Mount Home Baptist Church. Jerry, please.
Will you join with me in prayer? Our Father, how excellent are your ways in all of the world; how we thank you for your manifold blessings upon us. We recognize you as our sovereign Lord. We know that you know all about us before we come to you in prayer. You know our needs, and, Father, we know that our needs can be met and supplied through you. How we thank you for the preservation of our lives up to this hour. We have experienced this day many blessings that we know have come from your bountiful hand. And, Father, as we assemble here tonight, we remember that the Holy Scriptures teach us to pray for those who are in authority over us. And, Father, we thank you for the mayor. We thank you for the city council. We know that there are many decisions that will be made here tonight, and we pray for your guidance. We pray for your leadership. But, Father, once again, we want to recognize you not only as our heavenly Father, but the one who guides us, directs us, and keeps us through each day that we live. And may we always so live that others can see Christ in us. We make and ask our prayer in our Savior's name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Gamble. Next on our agenda is introduction of our city council. To my far right, Wendy Cato, council member. Forrest Fleming, Mayor Pro Tem. Louie Vina, our city attorney. I'm Ronnie Thompson, your mayor. Sally Sandy, our city manager. Sidney Simmons, city council. Chris Hawkins, city council. Kelly Russell, our recording secretary. And we really appreciate Joy Hearn-Guzman, who's our interpreter for the deaf tonight, and the absence of Becky Brinkley. So, thank you so much. First on our agenda is going to be a retirement, retiree resolution for Mr. Marvin Evans. I'd like to read that resolution. Whereas Marvin D. Evans was employed as a Labor One in the Maintenance Division of the Recreation Department on December 3, 1992, reclassified as Senior Maintenance Worker in the Recreation Department on July 1, 2004. And whereas Marvin Evans has faithfully served the city of Morganton in the Maintenance Division of the Recreation Department and has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 27 years, eight months. And whereas Marvin Evans retired from the city of Morganton as Senior Maintenance Worker of the Recreation Department on October 1, 2019. And whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Marvin Evans and express their appreciation for a job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the city of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Marvin Evans adopted this fourth day of November, 2019. Ronnie Thompson, mayor. Sally Sandy, city clerk. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
So may.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll ask Councilman Sidney Simmons to make that presentation.
Marvin, on behalf of the city council, I want to thank you for your service to the city of Morganton. Wish you many years of happy retirement. Got a couple of checks there. If you more than you spend, I'll even share them.
Thank you for being here and working for 27 years, and it's been hard. I appreciate working with all of you and my boss too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marvin.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the presentation of a service pen. Personnel committee and city staff have decided to recognize long-term employees of years of service. And tonight, we'd like to present a service pen to Michael Burley, Development and Design Project Engineer for 20 years. I'll ask Wendy Cato, city council, to make that presentation.
Congratulations, Michael. You were just a young lad when you came here. But we really appreciate the 20 years, not only as an engineer, but with all the departments that you work with so graciously. And we look forward to a few more years with you.
Thank you. I hope to make a few more years.
It's my honor and privilege to read the next resolution. This is a resolution recognizing the public service of Forrest A. Fleming. Whereas Forrest A. Fleming was first elected to the Morganton City Council to represent Council District Two in 2007 and was administered his oath of office on December 3, 2007, beginning the first of three consecutive terms in that office. And whereas during his 12 years of public service as an elected official, Councilman Fleming was elected by the city council to serve as Mayor Pro Tem under Mayor Thompson and also served actively on the Finance Committee, the Personnel Committee, the Utility Committee, and the Street Committees of the city council. And whereas Councilman Fleming actively participated on behalf of the city of Morganton in the North Carolina League of Municipalities, the National League of Cities, and Electric Cities of North Carolina, and participated in training opportunities through the UNC School of Government. And whereas Councilman Forrest Fleming during his 12 years on the city council has embraced and promoted Morganton's participation in the North Carolina Main Street Program. Has been a lifetime, long-time supporter of public recreation as a cornerstone of the community. Served as chairman of the Soapbox Derby, served as Western Piedmont Council of Government Policy Board Member, and as a board member and treasurer of Vedic, and logged many volunteered hours to the historic Morganton Festival and the Red, White, and Bluegrass Festival. And whereas Councilman Forrest Fleming's influence and service extended beyond the activities of the city as an active member of the Burke County Chamber of Commerce and as an active representative of the employer support of the Guard and Reserve for 20 years and is the current Western Area Chairman. And whereas Forrest A. Fleming has been a devout and faithful member for many years and decades at Mount Home Baptist Church, where he serves on the Board of Deacons, served as vice chairman, as well as serves as an usher. And whereas Councilman Fleming has devoted to the city of Morganton and has exemplified all the best in the public service through his positive attitude, his hard work for the citizens, and his devotion to the betterment and progress of the city. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Morganton, sitting in regular session, that with highest regards and esteem and on behalf of a grateful city, the council issues the resolution to honor and thank Forrest for his many years of unselfish service to this community. And as a token of appreciation of his service to the city, Forrest A. Fleming is hereby awarded the title Councilman Emeritus, together with all the honorary privileges and rights thereto pertaining, adopted in the city of Morganton, North Carolina on this fourth day of November, 2019, and ordered enrolled on the official records of the city of Morganton in recognition of the distinct service of Forrest A. Fleming. Ronnie Thompson, mayor. Sally Sandy, clerk. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
So may.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Motion passes. Forrest.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I appreciate it greatly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilman Fleming, would you like to say something?
I'll leave my remarks till the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. We waited anticipation, I'm sure. Next on our agenda is an update from the North Carolina School of Science and Math, Kevin Baxter. He's the director of the Western Campus Planning and Project Committee. Kevin, welcome. Please give us your update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you, members of the council, our spectacular city of Morganton staff and leadership, and citizens of Burke County and Morganton. Great to be back with you all. I will do what is very hard for me, and that is be very brief tonight. I want to give you a quick snapshot of where we are with the project timeline that you all have been very closely attuned to for more than a few years now, and also share a few comments as well as we're on the eve of another big event tomorrow. So first, let me say, we are, generally speaking, on our timeline. We have a goal of opening in August of 2021. From a construction perspective, we are where we want to be. We are moving forward as quickly and efficiently as we can to construct what is a very significant set of structures on this campus that you all know about. This is a daunting timeline. We have people working seven days a week on the project, and that will continue all the way through opening as we prepare for our first class in August of 2021. The construction activity, if you've driven by the site, you have seen a lot of dirt moving. Many of those dump trucks are on Western Piedmont's property and the School for the Deaf's property. And what you're seeing is the beginning of a new entrance road for the School of Science and Math and School for the Deaf that will come out to Hopewell Road and Burkemont's interchange. That will allow us to divert some of the entrance traffic for both campuses away from the Fleming intersection for more safe access and also more convenient access from I-40. We will also continue the road all the way over to Community College Drive so that we have access with the Community College and both schools that has made that much more efficient and easy for all involved. So that's the first work out of the gate, along with utility trenching and setting the pads for the new construction. Tomorrow's a very big day in my world because we are going to be having our bid day tomorrow for structural steel components of the new construction on our campus. This is the most important, critical path for our campus to open on time, and so we are praying for good bids tomorrow. This is for the Residence Hall and the Academic Commons Building. The Residence Hall's a 19-month job, and we have 22 months available to us. So we are tight, and that's a pretty important building so the kids can actually live here when they arrive. So we are moving forward with that. We will have three or four additional major bid package days over the next 60 to 90 days, and then it will be all systems go on the site nonstop. Right now, it's just the site work that will change in the next few weeks. On the programmatic design side, we have had our Board of Trustees meeting here in Morganton this past September. We have an academic program steering team report and a student experience steering team report that will be made public after our December Board of Trustees meeting in Durham. Those reports will outline the very essence of what the program will look like here in Morganton. This is building upon the work that the core planning team completed, that Ms. Sandy was a wonderful contributor to, and that we had great participation from the region on. I will make sure that you all have access to this through our website, through our newsletters, and so on, but this is going to be some dense information in the weeds about how the program is meant to live and learn and look here in Morganton and where it's going to be a little dissimilar from the Durham experience to take advantage of this region. And then finally, we've had spectacular success in the external relations space, as you all have borne witness to. We've had spectacular contributions from across our region and across the state and beyond. They said when we got here that, you know, what are you going to do out there in Morganton? We do it right here in Durham. You know, we've got a lot of money, a lot of friends, a lot of alumni. We're not sure what's going to happen out there. Well, we had the best year in the history of the institution here in Morganton with our fundraising. Mar Smitherman is behind me. He's a big reason why, as well as our countless supporters in this community. We raised upwards of $7.5 million for the School of Science and Math Morganton campus in the last year. So take great pride in the fact this region is representing statewide and beyond in the way that it has stepped up to help design this campus that will be the world-class opportunity for so many. Last thing I would like to say is that it has been three years since my first week I ever set foot in Morganton, and I did that as a candidate for the job I currently occupy. I walked around not knowing what to expect, having always driven past the exits on I-40 without knowing what laid behind that roadway, and I was blown away. Told my wife and my one-year-old and three-year-old, this is the place for us if they'll have us. And we got the job, very fortunately. We came here in January of 2017, and the welcome that we received from this city team, and that extends to the mayor and council through the city leadership and staff, has been unbelievable. We have this wall of champions and donors who've given seven figures and more, and among the most important contributors are all of you. The city of Morganton has stepped up in ways that are hard to quantify. I just want to acknowledge, and I hate when people do this because they always forget someone, but I'm going to try without cheating, beyond our elected officials, I want to acknowledge the incredible support offered by Sally and Sandra, by Louis and Kelly. They were the easy ones because I could see most of them. Also by Phillip and by Sharon and by Abby and by Chad and by Ethan and all the folks going out, working behind the scenes to help us with everything from groundbreaking festivities to transportation to communications and to legislative efforts down in Raleigh. So please know how much we appreciate the work you all have contributed to this project. We'll continue to keep you abreast. And my final, final comment would be to make sure that you know that we're not falling asleep at the switch. There's a reason we haven't announced any positions that are available to be hired. We keep telling you, we're about to hire people. Get excited. We're bringing more people to Morganton. Well, we're not allowed to at the moment because the state doesn't have a budget still. We have been waiting and waiting and waiting, and the House in Raleigh has done a phenomenal job in passing a mini-budget for our campus in Morganton only to appropriate the dollars that were in the budget that the governor vetoed. That budget would allow us to hire 14 new positions this year and, starting in July, 38 more. This is critical. We are without any support beyond myself, our office manager, and our temporary employees at the moment, and our budget's almost dried up. And so I want you all to hear from me that we are ready to go as soon as we get a green light from the state. They just adjourned down in Raleigh yesterday, unfortunately. I'm sorry, back on the 31st. And so we are waiting like everyone else, all the other state agencies, but in our case, we have very little recurring funding because we're a new project. And so please know that it's not for lack of wanting on our part, it's just for lack of having the power to do so that we have not started that process. So with that, I will conclude in rapid fashion and ask the mayor if there's any additional questions I can respond to.
Council, have you any other questions or observations for Kevin? Kevin, thanks. You're doing a great job. Thanks for keeping us updated.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a proclamation for National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Whereas for 27 years, the National Coalition for the Homeless and National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness has sponsored National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. And whereas the purpose of this proclamation is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing in Morganton for very low-income residents, and to encourage support for homeless assistance service providers as well as community service opportunities for students and school service organizations. And whereas there are many organizations committed to sheltering and providing supportive services as well as meals and food supplies to people experiencing homelessness, including the Meeting Place Mission, Burke United Christian Ministries, Partners, Behavior Health Management, the Outreach Center, Burke County United Way, the House of Refuge, Options Incorporated, Christ-Centered Recovery Program, North Carolina Vocational Rehabilitation, Burke Recovery, Veterans Representatives, and many more community partners. And whereas the city council recognizes that hunger and homelessness continues to be a serious problem for many individuals and families in the city of Morganton, now therefore be it resolved that I, Ronnie Thompson, mayor and the city council hereby proclaims November 16 through the 24th, 2019, as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in Morganton. Be it further resolved that the city council encourages all citizens to recognize that many people do not have housing and need support from citizens and private and public nonprofit service entities. Adopted this fourth day of November, 2019. Ronnie Thompson, mayor. Sally Sandy, clerk. I'm going to ask Chris Hawkins if he'll present that proclamation, please. I think Allison Asbell is here to receive that. Chris? Allison, would you like to say something?
I just want to first apologize for my...
Your child.
Yeah. Anything you think or know about a two-year-old, it's true, so I apologize. I want to thank everyone here that is supporting our efforts and this proclamation. Anyone who knows anything about the Meeting Place, we began in 2004, and we've been helping those who are homeless and at imminent risk of homelessness get back into housing or help them with their recovery plan. So housing is, of course, very important to us. Funding is very important to us, and of course, volunteers are extremely important to us, too. But the biggest thing that I have found since I began this position is information is the biggest thing. A lot of people don't even know who we are, what we do. So this is huge that you're letting the city know who we are and what we do by doing this and making this aware. So, thank you.
Allison, do you have a project coming up soon?
Well, we do have Give Cheese a Chance coming up on November 17th, so if anybody is a grilled cheese lover, please come and support our efforts. All the money raised will be going to the Emergency Shelter for Women and Children, which is just over here on White Street. So we have lots of things and the work's happening over there, which I'm really excited about, that we'll be able to share hopefully soon. But it's $15 a ticket, which is what it costs to house someone for one night at our shelter. So a little bit of information that we're also sharing that, you know, is important to know, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Under upcoming events, at our municipal auditorium, Vietnam Through My Lens on Monday, November 11th at 7:30. Michael Cleveland and the Flame Keeper, Thursday, November 21st at 7:30 PM. Downtown, our Holiday Farmers Market on North Green Street, November 23rd, is from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Our Winter Carnival and Memorial Tree Lighting is November 23rd from 5:00 to 8:30. The tree lighting begins at 5:30. Our Small Business Saturday and FAB Crawl on November 30 is all day in downtown. We think, I think we have an update on our Morganton Farmers Market update. I'll ask Abby Gentry Nelson to come far for an update on the Morganton Farmers Market.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for having me here tonight. The Morganton Farmers Market regular season ended last week, but I'm here to share some exciting news about a program that started in 2015. So the Morganton Farmers Market, which is operated by the Historic Morganton Festival Incorporated, began accepting SNAP and EBT cards in the summer of 2015. During that same year, the Farmers Market received a grant from RFI, which stands for Rural Advancement Foundation International, to match each SNAP/EBT purchase, dollar for dollar, up to $20 in what they call Fresh Bucks. Fresh Bucks are tokens that can be used to buy just fresh fruits and vegetables with our market vendors. And this grant essentially doubled the buying power for our SNAP and EBT customers. For example, a customer would come up and purchase $20 utilizing their SNAP and EBT card, and through this grant, they would get an additional $20 to spend in Fresh Bucks for fresh fruits and vegetables. And this grant that we received through RFI has been every year, 2015 through today, 2019, with the exception of 2018, due to lack of grant funding through that agency. But even with the gap of 2018, we were still able to match up to $10 through our sponsorship supporters. So I am happy to share that since 2015, the Morganton Farmers Market has seen an increase in sales. SNAP and EBT sales, along with the Fresh Bucks tokens, has generated a total of $19,885 in additional sales. And this is huge for our relatively small market. Our vendors are all local, and any additional funds go directly to support our healthy local economy. So with that being said, I invite everyone to come to our Holiday Farmers Markets at 111 North Green Street on Saturday, November 23rd and December 14th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And then we will also have winter pop-up markets on January 11th, February 8th, and March 14th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And during this holiday season, I would also encourage everyone to please consider to shop local. So, thank you.
Thank you, Abby, so much. Great presentation. We have almost a full house tonight, and our next item on the agenda, I'm sure that while most people have come, it's our comprehensive annual financial report, given by Karen Duncan, our finance director, and our CJ Palmer of Elliott Davis. So Karen, the floor is yours. I assume you have some slides.
Yes, sir. And I'm going to speak first, and then CJ will speak after. Prior to our meeting this evening, I was speaking with Councilwoman Cato, and I shared with her, as you know, this is my last city council meeting this evening as I'm getting ready to retire, and I shared that I thought it would be a great idea for me to go through this 134-page report of financial statements, one page at a time.
It wouldn't be a good idea, but not a great idea.
Well, she told me she would cancel my retirement reception if I did that. So I think we'll just stick with my brief PowerPoint then.
Let's go through it if we can cancel the retirement.
Not the retirement, just the reception. So, having said that, I think up on the screen you'll see the opening screen. So as I do every year, I want to just give you actually a very brief snapshot of how our fiscal year wrapped up for us. And also, as always, I like to use colorful pictures because I think they tell an important story, and I think that they are somewhat easier to read than a screen just full of numbers, although we all know that numbers are your friend. So the first screen that you have in front of you shows you all of the city's revenues from our last year. And I guess the point that I would just draw your attention to is that 69% of the city's total revenues are generated by our utility funds, and the other 31% are generated by our general fund. And often, we come across some of our folks in our community who think that our tax revenues are our biggest revenues. And as you can see by this largely, that's a misnomer, we are mostly sustained by our utility revenues. So now we go to the other side, which would be our expenditures, because what goes in generally goes out. So as you can see here as a snapshot, 68% of our total expenditures, as you might have predicted, are generated by our utility funds, and 32% are generated by our general fund. General fund, of course, being just the general government function, traditional government functions. So what's a little bit harder to see maybe, but equally important there is just our little trend analysis. And what you can see there, which we like that last blue line, which is higher than the others, indicating, as you can see, that our revenues from year to year went up significantly, and our expenditures stayed within a half million dollars of where they were a year ago, which is fundamentally... which is fundamentally actually flat for a number that big. So moving on, dissecting our, our general fund revenues just a little bit closer, about 40%, 46% of our general fund revenues is actually generated by property tax. So again, as I alluded to earlier, while it's an important revenue to us, it's not our most significant revenue. But again, it is important. And in, in the book that each one of you received, which is our annual 134-page of financial statements, the details of what's included in each one of these revenues starts on page 29, because I know everybody's going to go home super eager to see what's, to see what's hidden in, in those many pages. So as you can tell a little more here, because trends are actually easier to follow, I think, I want to talk just very, very quickly about specifically some of our revenues. The first group, which are ad valorem taxes, otherwise known as property tax. You can see there that the revenue was up slightly. It's a good thing, but we did have a, we did not, this, did we have a, we did have a property tax increase this year.
Revow.
Yes.
Revow. Tax rate stayed the same.
Rate was the same.
Property tax is up.
Not yet. Those will be now.
We're going to move on. And then my, my favorite revenue to talk about is sales tax. I do a monthly sales tax report for the City Council that, just because I know inquiry minds want to know, actually, our sales tax is up 7% over the previous year. But what I think is the really cool number to talk about is, and while I think that Morganton Heights is an awesome thing in Morganton, we know that not, that other, other types of sales awful, also influence sales tax. But I thought a really cool number to share with you is that since Morganton Heights opened, the year it opened, our, our annual sales tax was $2.7 million. That's, that's a lot of money. And this past year, it was 4.4 million. That's 161% increase in sales tax revenues since Morganton Heights opened. Guys, I think that's pretty cool. It's also pretty big.
And a huge number. And Abby's right, shop at home because it matters.
Absolutely. It, it makes a difference. Some of the other revenues, like you see there, other taxes are up, occupancy taxes up, and that, that's a good thing for us. That means people are staying in our hotels. And people are, and when they stay in our hotels, we hope they'll spend some of their money here, too. And that, that's up about 19% over the previous year. And then as we keep, as we go down then to the, further down there to restricted intergovernmental revenues, the grant there that makes that appear, that it went up, had to do with the Green Street Revitalization Grant. And last year, then we see a slight decrease in the, previously, the year before, I'm going to get this out here shortly. The previous year, we had a one-time state appropriation of $100,096,000, which was in the restricted, which is why we received less money this year in state grants. And that was a one-time appropriation for the Main Street Program. And probably the most notable and equally exciting increase in sales and services would be the Happy Story, the Community House revenue, which was up 22%. Pretty exciting. That's, and to that, it's $57,346, which is pretty cool. And certainly good news. So now let's go to the part we don't like always to talk about, what we spend. So in terms of percentages, 40% of the general expenditures are generated by Public Safety, but that makes sense because they're a very large budget. 24% is spent in Recreation, 15% in General Government, 8% in Transportation, 6% in Sanitation, 7% is used to pay for the general fund capital debt. And of course, again, as soon as I say debt, I know everybody's eager to run to that large book again, so I want to point out that that begins on page 66. And for those of you listening at home, this report is available on the city website. Just as a matter of information, the city has installment purchase debt and also has some, some loans related to our water and sewer utilities. But overall, our debt increased by 8.1% last year, which is a little over $2 million. So we're heading in the right direction there. Our debt kind of breaks out between, general fund has a little over $4 million in debt currently, and the enterprise funds has a little over $18 million. And that's mostly those big sewer loans, which we've had to do. But again, I want to put that in perspective for you. Even though our total debt is 22 million, we have to do a calculation, which we're, we are required to do by law, which is called a legal debt margin, which is the amount the state says we can't exceed in debt, and we should not exceed in debt. So from a perspective, we have $22 million in debt, and our legal debt margin is 121 million. So I think from a perspective, what that tells you is we've been very conservative and very careful and largely have always operated on a pay-as-you-go basis. So we have very, very, very insignificantly sized debt, particularly for a city our size with a budget our size. So let's move on now to the graph. And what you see here, let me go back. Our year-to-year difference in total was about $400,000, which again is, is not a very big difference from year to year. Now we get to my favorite screen. So one of the questions that I often hear is, well, how much can we spend? And of course, my answer is always nothing. You know, it's, you always start at zero, and then we go from there. And every year, I talk to you about this particular screen. To think of it, and I'm going to say it again, the good news for you all is it is the last time you'll have to hear me say it. We are going to, if you look at it kind of like a checkbook, we start out with a balance, which is our unassigned fund balance. That's the money that we could spend. Heaven forbid, we wanted to spend it all. And my legacy to all of you is, don't spend it all. That's the balance you would start with. And then you would, as you go down there, you see the appropriated fund balances. And those are basically like a legal IOU. They're money that we've had to put aside for a particular reason, and it really, it has strings attached to it. That's just the easiest way to put that. So that's what the appropriated fund balance is. So we start out with what we could spend, then we take away the promises we've already made. And then you get down to that, to the big number there, which is encumbered purchase orders or commitments at year end. Obviously, although I would really like for it to happen, we don't stop everything on June 30th. We have ongoing projects. We have contracts that have to be honored after the end of our fiscal year. And they, this year, in the general fund amounted to 1.2 million. And you've got pretty good ideas on what those are. Those are the Exit 105, Road Connector, those are the Greenway Connector, the Soccer Complex projects. And again, the, the things that we've started but have not, for various reasons, been able to complete. And then you all have a policy that says, no matter what you have in the checkbook, you can't spend 15% of it. And so that's, that would equate to 15% of our general fund expenditures or $3 million. So that leaves us available for appropriation at 7.7 million. That's a good number for us. It's also a little bit bigger than the one you saw there a year ago. But we're going to talk more about that. I'm not letting you off the hook that easy. Okay, so now I want to talk about proprietary funds, which are our utilities. And obviously, 64% of that is electric. But again, there's probably no surprise to anybody here about that. Costs more, it costs more to serve our utility, to serve electric. It also generates more revenue, about 64%. Wastewater and water equally produce 13% of our revenues, utility revenues, with Compass number growing to 10%. And so our happy news here is, if you can see those numbers, they're a little bigger on your screen. All our utilities where revenues were up. We had a 10% increase in both water and sewer, but don't dance about that yet. I'm getting ready to talk about that. And electric was up a half of 1%, which is pretty much flat. And Compass revenues were up 6%, which is the trend we always want to see with Compass. So now I want to talk about those 10% increases. I, I want to make sure that you don't think that that's revenues that reflect erroneous or inappropriate rate increases. A few years back, Brad and his crews, along with some of our management team, put together a 10-year asset management plan where we said, this is what we need to do over the next 10 years, and how are we going to pay for it? So instead of hitting our customers all at once with a humongous rate increase, because on that particular year there was a mandate we had to meet, we have scheduled out smaller rate increases so that we could put that money, and we are putting that money, in a capital reserve every year to, to help mitigate the future rate increases. Does that make, that make sense? That's really an important point to hear. So I wanted to make sure I shared that, again, so that that will sustain us into the future, which, which are, which is important. Okay, as far as the expenditure breakdown goes, 67% of the expenditures related to electric, 12% to water, 10% to wastewater, and 11% to Compass. So then we move on to the trend there. Water expenditures were up a half a percent. And of course, again, which is basically flat, shows good signs of good management. The revenues were up, but again, I just explained why. Wastewater expenditures were down 2%, and that was due to a reduction in chemicals. They were down, they were down quite a bit. Electric expense was down 6%, and that was due to 2.6%, $2.6 million less in the cost of electricity last year than in a previous year because we had such moderate weather in that year. So the, it cost us less to buy the electricity that we served, we served to our customers. Cable expenditures were up 4%, and that's somewhat, that was all in their supplies, obviously. That's somewhat cyclic when they have to buy additional boxes and that kind of, that kind of equipment. But then again, the revenues were up 6%. So obviously, if we're going to serve more customers, we need more equipment, more small equipment. So now we're in means of wrapping up here. So what does all this mean? And what does all this tell us in just plain vanilla language? Well, we know that the general fund and all the utility funds had positive changes in their financial position. That's, that's a really good thing. And the overall growth in the financial position for the general fund and the utility funds, once net of the encumbrances, net of our, our open obligations, was a $5.7 million increase, which then gets us close here to the end.
Three cheers for the red, white, and blue. Three cheers for the red, white, and blue. The flag of America forever. Three cheers for the red, white, and blue.
I had to go out with a bang.
It was good.
So that seemed, that seemed like an appropriate thing. So, so before CJ gets up and talks to you about the audit itself and, and their audit procedures, do you have any questions on our financial statements? We still have the opportunity to go through all 134 pages.
Any member of council have questions?
You're scared now, aren't you?
Real scared.
You will be visiting every year, do this again.
That's right. We're booking you in.
Probably not.
I was afraid of that.
Okay, thank you.
Karen, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Ms. Sandy, I want to thank you guys for allowing us to perform your city's audit again this year. Also want to specifically thank the finance team, Karen and her staff. We recognize that it takes a lot of hard work on their part to prepare for the audit and prepare the financial statements themselves. The CAFRA, as Karen has alluded to, is a pretty big document. So I wanted to express our appreciation for that. First, I'm not going to read the document either, so rest, rest easy there. I'll try and keep it kind of light and, and kind of overview on kind of what we do and on a couple of our reports that are in there. So first, I know it's probably not in front of you, but on page six, that's our auditor's report. It outlines management's responsibility for the financial statements themselves and our responsibility to perform an audit on these financial statements. What that means is we provide reasonable assurance based on our audit procedures that there aren't any material misstatements to the, to the financial statements. This year, we issued an unmodified opinion. You may also hear that referred to as a clean opinion. It's basically the same thing. So that's, that's good news. That's basically the highest level of assurance we can provide on these financial statements. There's a couple of other reports in the, in the document itself. If you flip over back, towards the back section of the report, there's a report on internal control of our financial reporting and our, on our tests of compliance with financial reporting. That's on page 127. The purpose of that report really is just to describe some of our, our procedures over that. Management's responsibility, again, for internal controls, and if there were any that we discovered that were material weaknesses or significant deficiencies or other matters that we would be required, based on governmental standards, to report that to you. We noted no instances of noncompliance, material weaknesses, or significant deficiencies this year. Behind that is a report on compliance with major state programs. That's page 129. The purpose of that report is for the subset of, of programs, of state awards the city received. We have to determine what major programs are, and we have to audit those for compliance with federal and state guidelines. Again, we noted no instances of noncompliance related to state programs. That also contains reports on internal control of our compliance, where we discuss. And we would report to you guys if we were aware of any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses with, with those programs. We did not issue a report on compliance with federal, major federal programs, as the city wasn't the recipient of the requisite number of $750,000 in federal awards this year. And on page 131, it provides a summary of our audit results. Karen's already gone over kind of the, the financial highlights, so I won't retouch on that. But I did want to direct your attention to, there's more information in management's discussion and analysis provided on pages nine through 19, and statistical sections in the back, which provide an overview of the trends generally within the last 10 years of the city's financial and operating metrics. So our audit process began in spring 2019 with a meeting with the management team. Our focus was on reasonable rather than absolute assurance, so we used sampling, and we focused on areas where we considered there may be a higher risk of material misstatement. Throughout the process, management's team was prepared and very helpful in our field work. We had no significant disagreements or noted no consultations with other independent accountants that the city had hired, and were no significant other audit findings or issues. Did want to mention that a few upcoming accounting pronouncements. GASB 87 for leases, which will be effective for fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. That was issued in June 2017. It'll require capital lease treatment, so basically recording on the balance sheet just for the government-wide statements and the proprietary funds for all leases. So that would, the ones that are currently reported as operating will be booked on the, the balance sheet, basically. GASB 84, which was fiduciary activities, probably won't have a huge impact on you guys. Don't have agency funds, but for, for entities that do have agency funds, and if you develop those, eventually, those will be referred to as custodial funds rather than agency funds. There's also a likely change to the financial reporting model coming up. It's in preliminary views right now. The calendar, the GASB calendar indicates that exposure draft will likely come out next summer, possibly with approval in 2021. So the report, in a couple of years, will look different. Just wanted to kind of make you guys aware of that. I want to thank you guys again for the opportunity for our firm to provide the audit, and I'll take any questions on the process.
Any questions for CJ? CJ, thank you so much for what you all did for, for the city of Morganton. I would like to call council's attention to page three and four of the budget that was presented. was presented. One item that people at home may not realize, I'd like to read this, actually paragraph. It says, "Physically responsible budgeting has been a key in the city's planning process. Currently, the city does not have any bonded debt. In 2014, the city's bond rating was reviewed by standard imports and increased two steps to a double-A bond rating, which is another sign of fiscal stability." I think that's a key point in our stability and the finances of the city of Morganton. And on page four is a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting presented to the city of Morganton for an outstanding job in financial reporting. So Karen, once again, thank you to you and your staff for a great job. Thank you.
And that's the 32nd year in a row that we've received that award.
Okay. We're juiced up now from the annual financial report, so let's move on to the North Carolina Municipal Power Agency Number One update. Sally?
On November 19th, the agency will have elections for the board of directors. Joseph Albright from Gastonia and Mayor Kuta from Statesville are running for those two seats unopposed, so we'll be supporting both of those candidates.
Our next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. I believe there are 10 items. Sally, will you bring us up to date?
Sure. So for those of you viewing at home, the consent agenda includes minutes from the October 7th meeting, tax releases in the amount of $11.94, taxi cab franchises issued annually, and there are two franchisees, award of, several awards of contract for roof replacement at the garage building, equipment services in the amount of $57,738. That's awarded to Johnson Roofing. The award of contract for installing air conditioning at Mountain View Recreation Center. That contract is going to Triangle Contractors, and that's in the amount of $94,500. The award of installation for a generator at City Hall, and that is going to Power Generation and Control, and that amount is $69,708.33. Declaring the 2007 knuckle boom as surplus, we have replaced that, and now we're going to sell the old one. The contract to award waterproofing for Collet Street Recreation Center and roofwork there to Turner Waterproofing, and that is in the amount of $59,930. Construction specifications for new electric services for 600 amps or higher, and those are consistent specifications that'll be used to help electric and building inspections. And then finally, contracting with Uptown Services, this is the group that we have been using for several years for consulting services in Comba, I mean in Compass, I'm sorry, we have used them several times. Dave Stockton is the individual. We would like to bring him in again, and he has given us a quote, and we budgeted for this, of $29,000. That'll be broken into two fiscal years. The first is to come and provide us an update and set a three-year strategic plan. The, that's $20,000, $9,000 to help us get through retransmission negotiations with the, over the air channels next fall. I will tell you all that the council has included in their packets a reference with three links, three articles. As we all know, cable TV, the TV part and the video part is constantly changing, and customers are dropping all over the country, and people are streaming, and we have folks that call every day. They're frustrated with the cost, but it is the programming cost that drives the cost of TV, and you got to make a decision. You either want to pay that for the convenience of flicking that remote, or you want to drop it, keep your internet, your phone service, and go into basically streaming. The articles that we have given to you, now the streaming groups are dropping it. There are several canceling service in January. Comcast lost 238,000 TV subscribers in the third quarter of this year, and AT&amp;T lost 1.4 million TV subscribers in the third quarter. I think, Greg, we talked today, I think we lost nine TV subscribers last month. So we continue to lose our subscribers at a slower pace than others, but the day's coming.
Do any members of council wish to have an item removed from the consent agenda? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
If I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Okay, under new business, we have consideration of requests for support of location of the monument to Burke County Courthouse for the veterans killed in action. Sally?
Yes, and this is the monument slash memorial that was talked about earlier this evening, and, and something that this council has, has, you know, had presentations and heard about, and had drawings, and suggested sketches and things, and even some engineered drawings for what it ultimately will look like. The memorial, to our understanding, will be something that recognizes and honors all of those killed in action in any conflict since 1900, is what we believe to be true. You have looked at this several times. There is currently, and we have the request for the old courthouse square, there is currently a process going on that has been a very public process. So out of our downtown master plan, one of the larger projects, and actually the project that the public in that process said they wanted to see the most, was the redo of the old Burke County courthouse grounds. And so that process has started. There have been several public input sessions. There is a group of architects, landscape architects and designers. There is also an artist, that there has been a state grant for some money to incorporate some public art into this project. An artist was selected by that committee, and they are also working with the architects. The steering committee has met. We do have representation from the Veterans Killed in Action Committee on that steering committee, because we believe that's important. That process continues. On November the 19th, those folks will be in town again, and they will present what they've heard from the public, what they've heard from their online requests, and what they've heard from a several-day tour where the artist was in town and met with several groups. This will be the steering committee's opportunity to see where that stands and to comment, and this will be the city council's opportunity to place your comments into the process. The county commissioners have also been invited to give their comments to that as well, so that then it goes on ultimately to final design. Have to get to final design, and ultimately some cost estimation to know as we go forward if it's a project we're going to be able to afford, how much money we're going to need, and how many sources of money we're going to have to find in order to fund that.
Thank you, Sally. What's the wish of council?
Motion to adopt a resolution supporting the efforts of the Burke County Veterans Killed in Action Committee to erect a monument, memorial monument.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to adopt a resolution supporting the memorial monument, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Do I have another motion?
Motion to delay any action on a specific location for a monument on the old courthouse square, at least until after the November 19th, design input is received and considered.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Sally, you said that that meeting on November 19th was the meeting of the design team, correct?
The, the design team is presenting, the steering committee, which is the committee that you all appointed, has like 35 members, something like that, along with the art committee that has been working for the grant through the arts council and the state arts council, and then for the city council and the county if they so choose.
Okay. Any other discussion? I have a motion, had a second. All in favor of the motion to delay any action until after November 19th, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And I feel like I need to say, on November 19th, you're not taking any action, and I think that's very clear. You're just able to give your input into anything in the design that causes you concern, anything you'd like to see considered as it goes forward. You would have to take any action at a regular city council meeting after that.
So our next item is consideration of a call special meeting of city council to hear the update. Sally?
Yes, and that is exactly for the purpose that we just discussed, which is to give your opportunity to provide input to the design team working on the project and to the steering committee.
There will be no public comment period, I believe, correct?
That is true.
Okay. And what's the wish of council?
Motion to call for a special meeting of city council on Tuesday, November 19, 2019, at 4:30 PM at the Morganton Community House.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is consideration of approval to establish an OPEB trust and participate in the North Carolina Ancillary Government Participant Investment Program, which is the AGPIP, and appoint representatives. Sally?
It's a mouthful, isn't it?
It is more than a mouthful. It's an egg pit.
So this is another one of those things that, that accountants really like and that Karen gets excited about. So the other post-employment benefits, commonly referred to as OPEB, so that's what we're talking about. CJ talked about accounting standards and changes coming up and all of that. One of the discussions that has been going on for years nationwide is funding for post-employment benefits to public sector employees. For the city of Morganton, we're talking about health insurance for retirees. Similar to the state plan, if you work for the city of Morganton 25 or more years, and you put those years in here, then you are eligible for some amount of retiree health insurance until you reach Medicare age. And as people are working, they are accumulating that service, and that benefit has a value to it, and there's a cost accruing. For decades, those costs have been paid by local governments, state governments, and everybody else on a pay-as-you-go basis. In the current year that we just completed, our yearly cost was 1.1 million. So that is what we paid last year for retiree health insurance. As we look toward our liability, which has been determined as required by law by an actuary, at the end of 2018, our future liability was $19 million. At the end of 2019, in the audit that you were just presenting, that had dropped down to 18.8 million. So as that benefit, you have to work here, years ago, you didn't have to work here as long to earn that. So as those people, those retirees get older, and as they reach Medicare age, this liability goes down. Just by comparison, the state health plan's liability and, and, and all for this is in the billions. So it's a really big number. We just talked about a general fund that's 22 million. If we had to pay all that out next week, it would deplete the general fund. Of course, some of that belongs to the utilities. So what is being suggested is that we start a savings account basically for this, and we believe that we should do this. And back at budget time, we talked about this. Rating agencies, the local government commission, if you go to them and you need to borrow money, and you're building a building and doing something like that, they are looking now, if you have this, in reviewing your financial condition. Several years ago, when we went from being self-insured and accepting all the risk for health insurance locally, to a fully insured plan, we joined the state health plan, we had a savings. And at that time, we took that savings, which was $450,000, and we set it aside in a restricted fund, and it's been sitting there while this was developed in order to be used for that. The state treasurer's office is running this program, which gives us the opportunity to send our dollars there, accumulate them, they will invest them, we get the economies of scale, and we get their expertise in doing that, which we feel like is a smart move for the future. Several things you have to do. The recommendation number one is that we take 250,000, because that is what is required to buy into the three funds at the state treasurer, an initial deposit, and that we fully fund the initial deposit. You have to appoint a plan administrator if we choose to move forward with this. That is just the person that's able to sign the business documents. And in most cases, what we're finding is that's the city manager, and you appoint it by position, so that as people change, that position is still the position that does that. The second thing we would need to do is set up trustees, recommending that we consider three, and recommending that they be the city manager, the city finance director, and one current-serving member of the city council. And then out of that, you appoint an investment advisory committee that would look at the funds that the treasurer is doing, and you decide how much of your money goes into each one when you make a deposit, recommending that that would be the finance director and the current sitting city council member. The other $200,000 would remain in the savings account where it is now, and once we get a little experience in understanding those three funds and taking a look at them, I think the investment group would be able to make a better decision on how to send the other 200,000, probably in the next budget year, and would recommend that. And then after that, this becomes an annual budget consideration. So I have said a lot. What you would need to do in order to do this, and I think it is a very prudent financial move to do this, and I think it shows and continues the fiscal responsibility that the city of Morganton has enjoyed for a really long time. You would adopt a resolution establishing the OPEB and setting up our participation in the state treasurer's fund, and then you would make the appointments for the plan administrator, the trustees, and the investment group.
So we need two motions. What's the wish of council?
I move to approve.
Okay. What's the wish of council? Forrest?
I move to approve a resolution to establish an OPEB trust and to participate in the AGPIP.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Sally, how long do they anticipate it will take to build that fund?
It depends on how quickly we make deposits.
Louis, would you like to add something?
Well, I was just going to add two things real quick. One, that the forms for the trust were drawn up really by the state, and they're recommended by the state treasurer, so we have just made, adapted to our situation, but it's really a standard arrangement that they recommend. And the second thing I would mention, got to say this, once it's established, the trustees are the ones responsible for making decisions about the trust. Decisions would not come back to city council, other than the funding each year, the budgeting. The trustees have that legal, and it's a major responsibility.
And the whole reason you set it in the trust is because it can then never legally be used for anything else. And at some point in the future, when a city council is sitting at budget time deciding, you know, how to balance a budget, you'll be able to go back to this savings account and use part of these monies in order to pay those costs that are accruing. And no, no other creditor can ever get at this.
That's right.
It is only legally restricted for this purpose, which is why the rating agencies and the local government commission and everyone likes that.
Yes.
Because in a perfect world, everybody would have this money sitting aside already. Now, now we're building that up. It's the same as the, the retirement system and the actuarial calculations for how much you put aside each year to ultimately fund that over a life.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need another motion, please.
Motion to appoint the city manager, currently Sally Sandy, as plan administrator, and to appoint the city manager, the city finance director, currently Karen Duncan, and one currently serving council member, Chris Hawkins, as the trustees of the OPEB trust.
I have a motion. Had a second. Any discussion? Chris, you are going to accept this assignment, correct?
I will.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now, may I ask for one other motion that didn't get here? So it would be the emotion, the motion to appoint the finance director, and in this, Karen, and in this case, Chris, as the investment advisory group.
Show me.
Do I have a second? Have a second.
And this would be as good a time as any to say, we are appointing all these people by position.
Right.
Karen will, of course, be retiring very shortly, and so the new finance director would... would succeed at the position as both trustee and member of the advisory committee.
All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is consideration of an award of contract for design and construction phases to install an elevated water storage tank at the Burke Industrial Park.
Yes. So, Burke Development has been successful in getting some money from the State of North Carolina Industrial Development Fund, which is a fund that is established where, when the state makes economic development grants in larger metropolitan areas, Charlotte, Raleigh, those kinds of things, and they're putting state money into that economic development project, they're required to set aside X amount of dollars for more rural counties to get to use. We have never used any of that money in this county, and we have applied for, and Burke Development has received a little over one-point-nine million to put an elevated water tank at the Burke Industrial Park, the Burke Business Park. That requires a match. So, the city and the county have offered to move that project forward. The tank is necessary to provide fire flow and water service for an industry or a customer that may locate out there, and we've had lots of looks over the last year or more, year to fifteen months out there. And sometimes a company won't make the decision because the infrastructure's not already in place and it doesn't meet with their schedule. So, being able to get the state funding, the county has agreed to pay the dollar match to the grant, and the city has agreed to manage the engineering and to oversee that through one of our contracted engineers, which would be West Consultants, a local firm, and that would be for seventy-five thousand dollars, fifty thousand for the design phase and twenty-five thousand for the construction phase. The way the inter-local agreement would work is the county would put in the cash match, we would pay for this, and then when an industry locates out there and they start to pay bills, we would get paid back before the entire group would receive any tax revenue.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to award a contract for fifty thousand dollars for the design phase and to award a contract for twenty-five thousand for the construction phase of a project that will construct an elevated water storage tank at the Burke Industrial Park and provide the necessary compatible connections to the city of Morganton water system to West Consultants P L L C.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Sally, this will be a water system that the city of Morganton manages, correct?
That it will become a part of our system, yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. The last item I have on our agenda is a thirty-day notice, thirty-day notice for vacancies on boards and commissions. Under our airport authority, we have two seats, which are currently served by Robert Pruitt and Sidon Simmons, our members with expiring terms. If you have an interest involving for any of these vacancies, you can get applications for that request that, for city Morganton boards and commissions are available during business hours from the clerk's office or on the city website. Anything else to come before? I'll ask Mayor Pro Tim Forrest Fleming if he'd like to say some parting words.
To all the citizens of Morganton, I just wanted to thank you for allowing me to serve on your city council for the past twelve years. It certainly has been an honor, a privilege, and a pleasure for me to serve you in this capacity. I'd also like to say a big thank you to all the city staff for working with me during the course of the past twelve years. It's been great working with you. I've had the honor and privilege of meeting nearly all of the city employees, and let me say to you, you do a terrific job, and I've enjoyed working with you, and I look forward to being around for a lot more years, and if you need anything from me, you just have to ask me, and we'll get together and do what we need to do. Certainly, a big thank you to the other members of the council. It's been such a pleasure to work with you. Mr. Mayor, it's been an honor to work with you, and I wish all of you much success in the future. Sally, it's been a great pleasure to work with you. You've given me a lot of guidance, and certainly I've needed it a lot of the times.
That works two ways.
And let me say that none of us are perfect. We've all made mistakes, but I've often heard it said that anybody that does anything at all, you might be subject to making a mistake occasionally. So, if you don't ever do anything, you're certainly not going to make a mistake, but that's not been our case. We've got a lot of great projects that will be coming online in the, in the next couple of years, and I say to all you folks that are here now, is going to continue to be here, and all you folks that are going to be re-elected, and those of you out there that are running for these seats, you'll enjoy it, let me say to you, you'll certainly enjoy it, and it'll be an honor and a pleasure. It has been for me to serve the city in this capacity for the past twelve years. And I certainly look forward to being around town, and if you run into me, you certainly speak, and we'll sit and chat over a cup of coffee, or it's been an honor, and I thank you so much for allowing me this privilege. I wish you all the best and may God speed. Thank you.
Thank you, Forrest. Thank you, Forrest. I would like to remind everyone, the polls are open tomorrow. Please vote. I believe the polls are open from six-thirty in the morning to seven-thirty. There are about ten polling places that the city of, citizens of Morganton can vote, so please go vote and make your vote count. Thank you so much.